Earbuds on the court.
Nope, that's okay. They're just so.
Oh, long, long. Grownups.
Oh, we can watch movies. Okay.
Should I just go sign this?
What was that?
You broke it.
I hope you get this right. Tell me when.
Anytime. Go ahead, turn your. I'm going to call the finance, insurance and personal meeting. Order, real call.
Cool, here. Weir, here.
Ah, sir.
Hustling.
Approval of the meeting minutes from March 20th.
Operation to hunt, but this time.
Can you? And what do you need help with? Whatever what is supposed to be.
Four.
Four?
Cool will make a motion to approve the minutes from March 20th.
Weir will second.
Yeah, motion for cool second by Weir to approve the meeting minutes from March 20th. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. You want for public comment, comment on an item not on the agenda.
Yeah, this one's a month.
Rolling task list you should have in your packet.
Yeah.
The rolling task list that Mina put together.
Other people commented stuff, which is good.
I'm sure. This is from mine.
This is.
I think it looks very good. They do have some questions on it.
So when did you actually want to take these issues up? Got a lot?
It's going to be for Charlie to decide.
Okay, so we'll have this discussion.
I always think as long as we have something, that's if we look at at the end, future agenda items.
Okay.
And there's things we can add to.
Okay. Yeah.
One question I've got is number seven.
Sure.
Is this the?
That's the the inter fund.
The inter funds?
Yeah.
Don't we need a motion to zero that out?
Yeah, well. Well, and that's just it. You told her to zero out, she zeroed it down, and I told her.
No, it has to come to council, it always has.
Yeah, well, I took it wrong. She took it wrong. So, but either way, it's not a write off per se. All it was done was clear the slate, basically, and we can still revisit those things. The only thing is that I'll have to work with utility. Joy. To get that, and obviously our communication isn't as great, but only way we're going to reconcile this is that we communicate with it, so. This is going on since 19.
That or just?
I think 22, in talking to the auditors, was the big thing, because I didn't start until the end of the year. We're pretty sure it's some of the cackle bills, you know, that we, because I, again, there was four or five months before I started and things were done, you know, maybe filled out the laws for solving and. Right. The stuff wasn't, whatever, it's nobody's fault, but I think we can do that.
Okay, you said Mike was working on this before you even came, a year before you came.
Was it 22 was?
22.
Jefferson Street and.
Yeah, I think it was Jefferson, yeah.
I thought it went before 22. I heard it went back as far as seven years.
It, well, and there's some that, yeah, that they were able to reconcile the running balance, so. So, 22 needs to get the number, what? Figure it out fine. Richard's suggestion was we just split it in half and be done with it, but she wrote it off because she thought that's what you told her to do. And it's really, it's really not.
It's got to come to finance.
And it's not really, it's still there.
That's still there because it hasn't gone through council or finance.
Right, so it's still there, but 22, I think, can be. Figured out? Figured out, okay.
I don't think after that it's going to be.
Yeah, the rest, it may be difficult, but I think 22, and I think it's that gap from when Mike left and I started and things just, I'm sure it's in that period of time. So, that'll be a project, so. So, yeah, so I'll reach out to Joy and try to communicate, like, what was paid, so. But I think we can figure that one out.
You have it all?
I think it was 11,000.
In 22?
Mm-hmm. I sent you the email on it, I think, but yeah, it was like 11,000 something, that there was the discrepancy. So, what we show and that, and it might have been as simple as we showed it was for you and the invoice didn't go out, I mean, I did that, so.
Very good, thank you.
Cool motion to accept the March 25 financial statements as listed in the agenda.
Weir will second.
Yeah, the motion for cool second by Weir to recommend the council approval of the March 2025 financial statements. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 2025-22, proving the fire department DNR grant. Chad, do you want to take that?
It's in your folders, the half price for getting the equipment for drip torches, some drip torches, some fire suction hose and so on and so forth for the equipment that's.
I don't have anything attached to it. Was there more to the document?
No, this is the grant we're applying for.
Oh.
It's just the cost of what the half would be for.
But you already, you already got the grant, didn't you? Were you working it or are you just now applying?
We were asking for it, yes.
Oh, you were applying?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, for some reason I thought this was, you already got it.
No.
Okay.
They're asking approval to apply for the grant.
Yeah, torches, hard suction, Indian packs, some of the pumps for Indian packs, so on and so forth. No P, there wasn't any PPE on this one.
It says the grant is for new equipment and PPE, so there is no PPE.
Yeah, we didn't apply for any of that.
But the new equipment, I'm sorry, is for a specific vehicle or just a?
Wildland.
Wildland, yeah.
Wildland, you said?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
And the money's coming from, is your?
Out of our, would come out of our general equipment.
Okay. Okay. Right? Do we have, is this replacing stuff we already have by any chance, or this new stuff?
It's replacing.
Replacement, okay.
Yeah.
With your pleasure, gentlemen.
We can see if Charlie's got any more.
Can you do that?
Okay.
You want a motion or?
Yeah. I'll move to approve resolution. We can do that here, can't we?
All right, so.
I'll recommend approval to council of resolution number 2025-22, grant application for new equipment for the fire department for about $2,400, $2,500.
Have motion from Weir to, in a second grade call, to recommend the council approval of resolution 2025-22, approving the fire department DNR, for the fire department to apply for the DNR grants, to update old equipment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried, and now the biggie. Resolution 2025-18, accepting the bid from Donor Incorporated for the Hendrick Street reconstruction and DPW parking lots. Apparently, we are a little bit short.
I thought that we're short. I don't understand where that comment came from.
Our funding is about a million dollars. There came in about a million dollars over what was budgeted.
Well, the 2023 quote was definitely closer than the 2024 quote, but it really wasn't. There was been a lot of changes that happened during the five years that we've been doing this, so we've added two sidewalks, I only wanted one. We put the sewer deeper. We added, what else did we add? What else did we add? There was changes all along the way. I mean, we had how many meetings on it?
I mean, originally five years, and we started, we didn't have that extension in the 333 corridor.
But that's by a grant, though.
Yeah, I understand.
We have 450 for that.
Yeah.
So that's in there, yeah.
It's expensive, but I mean, if you compare the unit prices for both projects, I mean, asphalt prices are, from Indian Hills and this or the same, they're closed, I mean, the concrete's closed, it's competitive, it's just a lot of money.
Barry did it, uh, with Ben ran the numbers, he said it's right on target, so.
With the numbers that Ben had, I guess part of the council packet, we're looking at bids from 2022. We're not even seeing anything current.
What bids are you talking about?
Estimate.
Estimates, excuse me.
How did the 2022 estimate get in there?
It's, what's in there?
Shouldn't be. At a minimum, it should have been the 2024, which was lower than the 2023. This is much closer to the 23 estimate than the 24. I don't know why some of the numbers that that were in there changed.
Looking at it with the utilities portion, I mean, city's looking at 1.2, probably, well, we have wheel tax and other things that we probably did look at five years ago to be applied here.
It was always intended, yes.
Which is going to help, because we didn't spend it every year.
Correct, we got a lot.
Saved it up, so that's going to come in there, so.
Without borrowing.
Would be much more than any other street project that we've been doing ever.
Right.
Before we completely split it up further with the utilities, because it's point three thirds, a third of it goes to the utilities, a lot of the asphalt, the grading and all that, and we went through all of this again, the spreadsheet which you have in here.
The bid result.
Yes, so we went through all of that, and there's one, two, three, four, five, six line items that will be, that will be split in the third, third to the utility and the rest to us. And some of the, these silly traffic signs, like a 2,500 or $2,000 utility sign, which is absolutely insane that we have to do it, so there's an awful lot. I think that's, I think what they did is kind of, that's kind of a slush or, you know, they put that in there, so. And we all know that they bid high, and a lot of it is going to depend on what all happens, like, there's a slurry in there to fill in the storm sewer that we can't move, but some of it, they will be able to move, and they won't have to fill it in. But they put the whole thing in there because they won't know until they get in the road. So, right now, even without splitting everything else completely into the thirds, we're at 1.1.
For the city?
Yeah. And $450,000 of that is part of the grant. The, the numbers that I put in there for the bid, just with 0.66 asphalt was 1.5, take the asphalt, excuse me, take the grant out and it's 1.1, and we still have more to give back over to the utilities. So, we're looking at a million dollars. Which now you have a choice of, do you want to get rid of some of the streets? They've already started chopping down the trees. Chad and I talked about it again today, you and I talked, looking at the, the way we're doing the sidewalks. I mean, I only ever wanted it on the one side, but I got overwritten on that, you guys wanted it on both, but we could take, with the trees and some of the sidewalk, outside $5,000, we can cut right out of it. So, it's up to you how you want to do this. We can move up to $260,000 without having to rebid it. So, the road project is the road project, and we have the DPW parking lot in there as well.
Correct.
And we threw that out because we were waiting for a street project.
Correct. Which we could have done that a long time ago, but we were, like you said, waiting for the street project.
Anyone put in a parking lot and half, half the rip back, all could have put.
Right, aprons and perches and all that, so there's multiple things in here. His parking lot, multiple sidewalks and entrance to 333.
Now, this doesn't include the sidewalk in Long or Henry.
No, that's. Separate one, you guys already approved that. That was a separate bid for two sidewalks and Indian Hills. That one's been approved.
That was a different project.
Yes.
Correct. This one is strictly Hendrick, 333 and the DPW parking lot. So, it's morphed over the years, it never used to be the parking lot.
It's going to be more, what isn't more these days, and we're just having to be prepared for it, or more if we can cover it.
I mean, where was it coming that we were a million dollars short?
What's that?
That was a million dollars difference this came out of.
The bids came back higher.
Right.
Significantly higher, but after doing the math, I think.
Because city's got budget of 1.3. Doing the state aid, LRIP, state aid GTA, the wheel tax. Money debt is going for debt for the DPW parking lot. We had 1.3 already budgeted for that portion, and you're saying the 1.3 or 1.4 is the utilities?
Not the whole, but.
600.
How much of that was yours then, Barry?
Well, it depends how you split that. I'll hand it to the utility, I think it came in at.
I have a note from 652 for you when we were talking about.
For sewer or water or both?
No, just sanitary. 11,000.
So then it's not that much higher.
Yeah, as scary as at first, but.
Well, when, when that came in, that it was a million dollars. If there's 300,000, I'm not worried about that.
I don't think it's going to.
Probably worth it.
Yeah.
Well, I think we got to do it anyhow.
I think, I mean, indicates we should do it now.
Yes.
Absolutely. Push it off.
No, we have too many other things, so pushing off is not going to benefit.
Yeah, it's going to have to come out of general obligation debt, the remainder. Are we in agreement with that?
That we have to go out for debt? Yeah.
The rest of it, general obligation debt.
Yeah.
And it's not a lot. Plus, we have more debt that's going to be dropping off over the years. Like 26, something. We got, first one's dropping off in '28, second one's dropping off in '29, the third one's dropping off in '23. So, we're just, we're just doing this instead of doing this and then that, which is exactly what Ellers, which is normal school board, we do that all the time, too. You don't want to keep doing that.
I don't want to talk about the school board.
Yeah, I know, it's a sore subject for all of us, but it's what it is.
I don't want to do what they do at all.
No, we're not, no. We're just trying to maintain things, and when we get to the end of the thing, I'll talk about another meeting we had. Food agenda items and announcements, I don't need to do it right now, because we're on this. So, yeah, it, it looks bad, but over the course of five years and the multiple times we kept reestimating all of this.
I guess.
Twenty twenty five dash eighteen, accepting the bid from Downer Incorporated for the Hendrix Street reconstruction and DPW parking lot. Apparently, we are a little bit short.
I thought that were short. I don't understand where that comment came from.
Our funding is about a million dollars. There came in about a million dollars over what was budgeted.
Well, the twenty twenty three quote was definitely closer than the twenty twenty four quote, but it really wasn't. There was been a lot of changes that happened during the five years that we've been doing this. So we've added two sidewalks. I only wanted one. We put the sewer deeper. We added, uh, what else did we add? What else did we add? There was changes all along the way. I mean, we had how many meetings on it?
I mean, originally, five years when we started, we didn't have that extension in the three thirty three part of the road.
But that's by a grant, though. We have four fifty for that.
Yeah.
So that's in there.
It's expensive, but if you compare to unit prices for both projects, I mean, asphalt prices are from Indian Hills and this or the same, they're closed. I mean, the concrete's closed. It's competitive, it's just a lot of money.
Barry did it, uh, with Ben ran the numbers. He said it's right on target.
With the numbers that Ben had, I guess part of then our council packet, we're looking at bids from twenty twenty two. We're not even seeing anything current.
What bids are you talking about?
Estimates.
Estimates, excuse me.
Twenty, how did the twenty twenty two estimate get in there?
It's what's in there.
Shouldn't be. At a minimum, it should have been the twenty twenty four, which was lower than the twenty twenty three. This is much closer to the twenty three estimate than the twenty four. I don't know why some of the numbers that that were in there changed.
Looking at it with the utilities portion, I mean, city's looking at one point two project a lot of. I mean, we have real tax and other things that we probably did look at five years ago to be applied here.
It was always intended, yes.
Which is gonna help, because we didn't spend it every year.
Correct, we got a lot.
We saved it up, so that's gonna come to bear. So one point two would be much more than any other street project that we've been doing ever. So.
Before we completely split it up further with the utilities, because it's point three thirds, a third of it goes to the utilities on a lot of the asphalt, the grading and all that. And we went through all of this again on the spreadsheet, which you have in here.
The bid result.
Yes, so we went through all of that, and there's one, two, three, four, five, six line items that will be that will be split in a third, third to the utility and the rest to us. And some of the these silly traffic signs, like a twenty five hundred or two thousand dollars USBA sign, which is absolutely insane that we have to do it. So there's an awful lot.
I think that's, I think what they did is kind of, that's kind of a slush or, you know, they put that in there, so.
And we all know that they bid high, and a lot of it is gonna depend on what all happens. Like, there's a slurry in there to fill in the storm sewer that we can't move, but some of it, they will be able to move, and they won't have to fill it in. But they put the whole thing in there, because they won't know until they get in the road. So right now, even without splitting everything else completely into the thirds, we're at one point one.
For the city?
Yeah. And four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that is part of a grant. The the numbers that I put in there for the bid, just with point six six asphalt was one point five. Take the asphalt, excuse me, take the grant out, and it's one point one. And we still have more to give back over to the utilities. So we're looking at a million dollars, which now you have a choice of, do you want to get rid of some of the streets? They've already started chopping down the trees. Chad and I talked about it again today after you and I talked, looking at the the way we're doing the sidewalks. I mean, I only ever wanted it on the one side, but I got overwritten on that. You guys wanted it on both, but we could take with the trees and some of the sidewalk, I'll say five thousand dollars, we can cut right out of it. So it's up to you how you want to do this. We can move up to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars without having to rebid it. So the road project is the road project, and we have the DPW parking lot in there as well.
Correct.
And we threw that out because we were waiting for a street project.
Correct. Which we could have done that a long time ago, but we, like you said, wait for the street project.
Anyone put in a parking lot and half the rip back call could have put it open.
Aprons and perches and all that, so there's multiple things in here. His parking lot, multiple sidewalks, and entrance to three thirty three.
Now, this doesn't include the sidewalk in Long or Henry.
No, that's a separate one. You guys already approved that. That was a separate bid for two sidewalks and Emmanuel's. That one's been approved.
That was a different project.
Yes.
Correct. This one is strictly Hendrix, three thirty three, and the DPW parking lot. So it's morphed over the years. It never used to be the parking lot.
It's gonna be more of what isn't more these days, and we're just having to be prepared up, or more if we can cover it.
I mean, where was it coming that we were a million dollars short?
What's that?
That was a million dollars differences came out of.
The the bids came back higher.
Right.
Significantly higher, but after doing the math, I think.
Because city's got budgeted one point three. Doing the state aid, L R I P, state aid, GTA, the wheel tax. Money debt is going for debt for the DPW parking lot. We had one point three already budgeted for that portion, and you're saying the one point three or one point fours, the utilities?
Not the whole moment, but.
Six hundred.
How much of that was yours then, Barry?
Well, it depends how you split the, the stuff handed to the utility. I think it came in at.
I have a note from six hundred and fifty two for you when we were talking about.
For sewer or water or both?
No, just sanitary.
Sanitary.
Then it's not that much higher.
Kind of scary as at first, but.
Well, when they, when that came in, that it was a million dollars. If there's three hundred thousand, I'm not worried about that.
Probably worth it.
Yeah.
Well, I think we gotta do it anyhow.
I think, I mean, indicates we shouldn't do it now.
Yes.
Absolutely. Push it off.
No, we have too many other things, so pushing off is not gonna benefit.
Yeah, it's gonna have to come out of general obligation debt, the remainder. Are we in agreement with that?
That we have to go out for debt?
Yeah.
The rest of it, not a general obligation debt.
Yep.
And it's not a lot, plus we have more debt that's gonna be dropping off over the years.
Mm-hmm. What, twenty six?
We got the first one's dropping off in twenty eight, second one's dropping off in twenty nine, the third one's dropping off in twenty thirty. So we're just, we're just doing this instead of doing this and then that, which is exactly what Ellers, which is normal school board, we do that all the time, too. You don't wanna keep doing that.
I don't wanna talk about the school board.
Yeah, I know, it's a sore subject for all of us, but it's what it is.
I don't wanna do what they do at all.
No, we're not, no. We're just trying to maintain things, and when we get to the end of it, then I'll talk about another meeting we had. Food agenda, I haven't sent an announcement, I don't need to do it right now, because we're on this. So, yeah, it it looks bad, but over the course of five years and the multiple times we kept reestimating all of this.
I guess what's frustrating is we don't have those numbers in the packet. We've got numbers from twenty twenty two.
I don't understand how twenty twenty two is. That's one that was sent to me.
It's in the council packet.
Like last month or last week?
No, today's.
The cost estimates are just.
In twenty twenty two, and I'm going, those are three years old, like Richard pointed out. Why are we getting those instead of the park rail ones? Right there.
Oh, this one. Oh, that? I'm not even sure exactly why that was in there. That was sent to us from Joy. This is Joy's. This is Joy's number.
Yeah, it's dated.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is.
Wish we had more current ones.
Yeah, I can get you all there.
Note to self is, yeah.
Yeah, that's the utility.
Next time, this would be nice, but when it gets to the council, they have a protocol like this, it'd be nice to be able to say that.
Yes, they're our current numbers.
Yes.
The reason that is in there, because when we started finalizing all of this, and I had to keep signing documents, I needed to know what they submitted, what the utilities submitted to the USBA, and they did include, and that's when Barry, Chad and I were like, what do you mean? You've already charged you a third of all the road projects. We did not do that on Jefferson Street, which is why that's now on our task list. Because we're like, okay, so we have to come up with a policy as a council, not just somebody behind the door that knew about it. We need to know as a council, how do we want to do this? All road projects are gonna have sewer, water, storm sewer, there's, it's a combination. Are we going to charge the utilities for a portion of that? That's a rate payer versus a taxpayer. Ultimately, they're about the same people, but there are different people in a rate versus a tax. So we have to come up with what policy we want to do. So that's why that was in there, because that's what Joy submitted to the USBA. But yes, you should have also had the other one in there.
Where did they know?
Yeah, and we've had them over the years. I think they were at the Public Works multiple times, because that's generally where this starts at, was the part of the DPW meetings.
Okay.
So.
Is the.
We'll get better at it.
Do we know engineering is closed?
Engineering, we've had those documents for years, and so what I told Mitch, now that this is done, once this is approved, utilities will have theirs, we'll have ours, everybody's gonna have their signed contracts, so we know. But we've been, we've been paying on this for years already. So a lot of that eighty thousand dollars worth of engineering, that's already been paid for over the years. So we don't have that to, that's been taken just out of general budgets, not necessarily this specific project.
Thoughts?
We'll have to add construction observation as well as engineering, but maybe that's the same here.
Everyone has.
And bring it up, too. We're gonna have, there'll be some field inspection. We were here, though, we have signed contracts.
Because I want signed contracts by everyone. We never used to do that.
Right, absolutely.
But I did that on Jefferson Street, and then I want it for this one, too.
No, absolutely.
Yeah.
But you can divide out construction observation, too, because that's easy.
Absolutely. Correct, and a lot of these things. But then, like I said, going forward, we need to make sure they understand, we understand how her and Joy deal with it, so everybody's on the same page, so that we don't get ourselves into these predicaments where we don't know where the money is and why we have outstanding things.
Right.
So, hopefully, yeah.
Makes perfect sense.
Yep.
Hopefully, we're not planning stuff five years old, but maybe we should.
This is a different one. Well, we need to that.
Planning is fine, designing is different.
We'll get to that.
Some of the projects that are coming, exactly.
It is. You were in that.
I'll make the motion to send a resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen to council for approval.
But, go ahead, I think I'll, I'll talk when you get a second in.
Funding, well, to be determined, I guess. You know, we're gonna go off and get all debt, but the numbers that are here are just from the bid, right?
Yes.
So this is just a bid, letting, or the acceptance of the bid.
This will be acceptance of the bid.
I'll second.
Did you want to change anything?
No.
We're already chopping trees. Are you gonna keep the sidewalks on both sides? You don't want to reduce anything?
Well, we had discussed that, and it seemed like the balance of the way that people will walk to the park, a lot of the residential area.
On the east.
Is on the east, and the sidewalk on the west. Well, up to, right?
Yeah. Because Cleveland was sidewalk less at one time, so at least there's.
There's sidewalk.
There's a sidewalk there, but.
The reason I did not want it on the DPW side is just because they, their big trucks, people coming in and out of there, they have two different driveways. That that would just discourage somebody from walking there, and you really don't need it on two sides. It's a somewhat narrow road. And then you got Hurley's property, same thing, people kind of coming in and out of that thing.
Or commercialized on one side than residential on the other, so. And there's more room on the side of Hendrix to run it.
My thought is that you're crap. My thought is that you're crap. You're forcing people to crap.
Sidewalk all the way on the east side, we're putting it on the utility side.
Right.
Once it gets past Bishop Circle.
Okay, let's say you walk in from downtown, and then you take, angle north on Hendrix. You have to cross Hendrix somewhere.
Yep, you're gonna do it anyway.
Twice.
Twice, yeah.
You're gonna have to do it anyway, right?
Depends on what happens after.
I'm, I'm just simply asking the question, because people were excited about the dollar amount. If you don't want to change it, then we don't want to change it. They've chopped down trees, life goes on, we save some money there.
It's about fifteen thousand dollars, you remove that sidewalk from Cleveland Street to the dip crossing on the west side.
Right. I, I was looking at it, I mean, running it down the east side makes the most sense, looking at it, just do it before I came here, just start running again, so.
Well, I agree with that. I just think about the people coming from this side, from this side of Hendrix.
From the west, yeah. They're either gonna have to, they're gonna have to cross the road at some point.
Which is a greater area of the city.
And then you're dealt by the utility, and they're gonna cross it again.
They had to cross it.
Cross it again.
They had to cross it.
They could probably do it at East Madison as well. It's take and pick. They'll have more than one shot to do it.
Which side is it gonna be dealt by the utility? It's on the west side.
The west, on the utility side.
Okay, so what you want to do is eliminate the sidewalk on the west, down to the utility. So you want to make people to cross over to the east side, walk down there, so we're crossing once already. Walk down there and then cross over again.
How else are you gonna do it? I guess.
Right, now they're walking in the road.
Yeah, they're walking in the road.
That's the purpose of putting in sidewalk.
Correct.
Right, but my understanding and looking at the.
That.
This with the crack that runs through there.
It's what, thirty five thousand for the sidewalk?
Fifteen.
Fifteen to eliminate it, twenty is.
Thirty five thousand with the trees and the elimination sidewalk. Trees was twenty grand, we're cutting them down. So the question is right now, the fifteen thousand dollars of the sidewalk.
I mean, fifteen thousand, say fifteen thousand, and just spend that on.
I'm just wondering how much is gonna be used though, Ken, because if they're gonna walk on the west side of that, of Hendrix down, okay, they're crossing Cleveland, so that's one cross already. I mean, they have two along the other side, they have Tremaine and Bishop at one point.
Hendrix Street is not necessarily a little, well, I don't know, especially when you're talking with the park, when you've got baseball games, everything else, that gets a lot of traffic. I mean, I'm not gonna say all the time, but it does pick up a lot of traffic.
He said they have to cross Cleveland Street.
Right now.
And I said that's a little longer.
Oh, Cleveland, okay. I thought you were talking about Hendrix, my mistake.
Well, this is, this is obviously Hendrix, and right now, the only sidewalk we have is right here on the west.
Correct.
And we added that on Cleveland. Then if you, what we're talking about is making sure we have sidewalk, both of these will stay, but we're talking about keeping this all the way down to Bishop Circle. And you can see, this is all residential over here. So the DPW has two driveways here and another driveway here, plus this one goes into Hurley's parking lot. And because of this little water thing, this is actually gonna cost us a little bit to keep the sidewalk going to this whole way here. But we could stop the sidewalk here on Bishop as it's drawn now, and that literally be more of a kitty corner to come across here, so we're not dealing, I don't think we configured that in there, Chad, when we were talking today, that we don't do anything over this waterway, we leave that be, that you could just literally have the sidewalk or the crosswalk here. So you're far enough away from this corner, which is a blind spot and kind of a pain in the butt. The water.
So.
Go ahead.
The sidewalk will come to the street at Bishop, so you have to cross Bishop on the south side to get on back on the sidewalk, go to the park.
Mm-hmm, it's gonna be on this side. And the road that's going in is gonna come off right about from here, kind of this way. So there's no sidewalk on this side at all. So the people that are gonna come out of here, once this ever gets filled up, they too have to walk across the street to get there. No matter what, people have to walk across the street, because we can't do the sidewalk on this side.
It's too close to that line.
The grade and everything.
You'd have to try to fix the grade.
So it's better visibility walking on this side anyway?
Pretty much everybody does walk on that side.
Yeah?
Yeah.
But then this will be curb, gutter, sidewalk, all on this side, which is all the residential, and you're kind of staying away from this kind of activity. But it's up to you. If you want to leave it, we leave it, but this too adds more cost because of this water right here.
You gotta cross on that, according to the plan, you're crossing the sidewalk over that culvert.
Is included in that fifteen you gave me?
It just seems a little, the school bus drops all the kids off right in that corner, you're gonna expect them to walk down the road to get to their houses.
Where do they drop off, Barry?
They, two spots along there, the bus stops, drops kids off for all, they don't go into the mobile home park.
Yeah.
They drop them off on the road there. If you don't have a sidewalk, then you're gonna expect them to walk down the road after the bus drops them off.
Okay.
It doesn't.
Which way is the bus traveling?
Usually it's from the coast, right?
Going north?
South.
So you'd be crossing from here.
I mean, I.
Continue the sidewalk. I thought it was so. Chad might have answered better, but I always thought they.
They were trying to, if I've ever seen the kids get dropped off there, I believe what you're saying.
They pick them up and drop them off. They pick them up and drop them off right there, and now you're expecting them to walk down the road.
Why can't we request that they pick them up going the other way?
Sidewalk now. Correct.
So where is the bus drop off?
I just know there's two spots, and they drop kids off.
Right on the, right where your cursor is.
Okay, so they drop, they pick them up and drop them off, so they always getting off this way?
And they'll walk into the subdivision or the mobile.
But the bus door is always on right into Bishop versus.
I think the door's on the west side.
On this side?
I think they're coming this way, I thought.
I think they pick up in the morning.
But regardless, you put this outside, now people walk.
So they come through the park?
No.
No, I wouldn't think so.
They don't pick up there anymore?
Nobody comes through the park, no buses.
I wouldn't think a bus.
They have to turn around someplace, so where do they turn?
Probably back in and back out.
I would have to pay attention next week if there's no picking up.
Yeah, I can't remember either.
But regardless, this is no different than anywhere else, the bus stops, kids walk across the street to get into it.
I'm saying they can't get anything on that whole strip there, the mobile homes that are there, you're expecting them to walk in the street again. Or they go on the sidewalk and come down from their house and cross the street.
We're not putting any sidewalks in here, we're only talking here.
Well, definitely not.
Yeah, that's, that's private property.
It's private property, yeah.
Yeah, they did not, I'm sure they haven't done it.
So I'm just questioning, do you want to do anything about that?
They did.
Because to me, I, me personally, I thought it was silly to put a sidewalk over here, when it's gonna be curb and gutter, and plus, we're making a nice little terrain here. Barry's already, you buried all your stuff now, right? We're sort of, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. So it is up to you.
As we just approved a bid to add sidewalks where we didn't initially.
We gotta have at least one.
We need one, without a doubt, we need one.
We've done it.
Yes, absolutely. That's been a thought, just like Lum, it's been a thought on my side for years, watching all these people walk in the road.
So are we creating a thought?
I don't think so. We're one hundred percent improving that street, both on sightline, safety, and just basically your cars, where care and name cars, that road is horrible. And I don't, honestly, I don't care, it's really what you want. I think it's a waste, but for fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, if you want it there, it's just stuff, Chad's got a cloud, because you're not gonna shut that off in the way.
No.
Once we put that in there, it's gonna stay there.
It's like five hundred seventy five feet, like, from Cleveland to the culvert. I figured it's four foot, four foot wide culvert, or four foot wide sidewalk, five hundred fifty feet long, and multiply it by the six dollars and fifty cents per square foot.
People on this side have to cross one way or the other. Either way, they gotta cross, it's a hundred percent fact they gotta cross.
The council approved this plan before, I haven't seen any reason to change it, I know.
But that's usually what happens, that bids come back to. And again, I'm not arguing anything. I am trying to save money, too. If we don't need it, then don't waste our money.
Look at future growth, and we're gonna have two ways into that park right now.
I'm pretty sure that's all you're ever gonna have.
Well, maybe not, because you've got, up by me.
The one way you have in the park only has one sidewalk, as it stands right now, either, so.
Say that one more time.
The only, the way, one of the ways into the park right now is the way it's one sidewalk.
I mean, can I add something?
Mill Street has one sidewalk.
I think no matter what you do, people are still going to walk on the.
They're gonna go.
They are.
You're never, you're never going to eliminate that one.
And you can't, you can't give your ticket for now, you know, can't force them.
Yeah, that's just my opinion.
We have no bike lane, we put it in there. Stop her.
Giving her work.
Right, it is. Do you need, don't care, one way or the other?
No.
Our sidewalk policy is to put in sidewalks when we redo roads, if it makes sense. We're gonna have a conversation on Van Buren. Doesn't make sense to put two sidewalks there, people will have no front yard. That's a whole nother conversation.
The policy was to put sidewalk on both sides, unless the terrain was such, you could only put it on one side.
Correct, that's basically what this is. You don't really need it on two sides. Because of the terrain, we can't do it on both sides, so no matter what, we're only doing it on one side, past Bishop. We're gonna have the same problem in twenty twenty seven for Van Buren Street, same problem, road's too narrow. Cleveland, we only put in one sidewalk, so we have precedence of only putting it on one side, but we also eliminated the fact that homeowners pay for it, it's all a tax thing. It is fair that the one side of the street has to pay for it and the other one doesn't, and they have to take care of it, which I appreciate. So, Josh, ask a question? So, should I ask a question? Don't know if there's any reason why you would want to wait, I mean, you can't really wait until construction starts because they have to know in advance.
Yes.
You could change order that way.
To get rid of that sidewalk, yeah, that's an easy thing, we're already getting rid of the trees. Are, are we expecting them to derail the stumps and all that though?
We started that project, we're gonna finish it.
Lots of wood chips.
So what's the pleasure, gentlemen? We have a motion just.
Do you have a second, yeah?
Do we have a second?
Yeah, that's why I didn't talk until you guys were done, till you made a motion in the second, and then I was adding in more conversation.
I'm writing it down, sorry.
So it's up to you to decide, and very well can change that council too.
Yes, maybe that's where. Maybe that's where it should happen.
And that's why.
We're not overstepping, but.
It's not the worst idea to get a larger group opinion.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that, and that could be part of your motion to discuss if you would like it, now can you just bring it up or I'll bring it up?
You can just bring it up, I think.
Okay, works for me.
Question?
You made the motion correct.
Yes, you could.
Question, a cool second by Garrett to recommend the council approval of resolution 20, 25-18, accepting the bid from down there for the Hendrick Street reconstruction at DPW Park. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, follows motion carry. All business, fire department policies and procedures, as we are still in the negotiations.
Doesn't seem like there's anything we can.
Nope.
Doesn't make any sense to continue to clean it up until that's resolved.
We can just defer this until the union negotiation is done so we can pay it off up here.
That sounds like a great move.
I think that's a great idea.
Which we have a next meeting next week.
Is there a motion to defer it until after union negotiations are complete?
I would make that motion.
Okay.
Have a motion, a wire taken by Cool to defer the fire department policies and procedures until union negotiations are complete. Future agenda items and announcements.
Question?
Excuse me, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Follows motion carry. Future agenda items and announcements. Chuck, after the organizational meeting, you'll be the chairman of the committee, you have anything Chuck?
Do you want to establish anything off your task list?
Yeah, I was just looking at the calendar, what the next one brings.
It's probably good to have to go through a couple of these things.
Yeah.
Ellis will be doing the full presentation in May.
In May?
Yes.
So.
Dean, did I tell you the first meeting in, I think it's the first because it's just going to council?
That would probably be better.
Yeah, I think.
It's probably never written on my calendar.
I'm sorry, it's one, it's gonna be in May, for sure.
Yeah.
I, I, I'll double check that, but yes, it will be in May for sure, I just, there's some reason I can't remember the date.
Number one's gonna be, I'll pick one.
It is, so two will go right along with it.
Right. But two, two could get done though, we could.
Oh yeah, that's just a policy, we can do that one.
We could produce a policy, maybe we put that one on there and then we'll see how long it takes.
But three, really, we need to have a conversation on that so these guys know what's going on.
Um.
Because at the moment, they want to keep that third ambulance and finance never approved that.
Put that on there then.
That's number three, that's rolling Catholic, so you want two and three on the next finance?
Anything to add there Chad?
I would just be a great benefit, as far as, I don't know what the discussion was prior to that, but we were.
Which is why we need with you.
We were planning on keeping it for a minimum of three years.
That's the first I've heard that.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why we need to talk with you.
Right.
Over all of this and just start it over. Just start it over. So we should do that. Okay, and then, anything else? So we have a meeting on, Monday or Tuesday, Monday?
Monday.
What day did we meet, Monday? Barry, Chad, Charlie, I, Lam, and went through the road list again, because I sent out an email to the DOT asking how firm they were on the 2031 road. DOT, because I said, three years apart, you're killing me. And they actually came back and said, yeah, we'd really like to move that. So they preferred any of the next three years, so they, they were fine moving it out. So after going through our list, which we will, I'll update it, send it to the DPW, you guys can approve it, this will be the one that's gonna be going on the website for people to know. So what we discussed then is 2026, we were gonna do milling overlay on, why do I have the North Monroe on?
The North, not North Van Buren.
Oh Jesus, okay, I read my own hand or I put glasses on.
Yeah.
At all times, even though I got contact.
To move that or keep that or 26.
And, yeah, so 2027, we're gonna do South Van Buren, which is a huge project. That's got a lot going on, so that'll, that'll take a little bit to go through. 2028, obviously, is the 89 project, 29 Maple, 2033 is where we're putting out the DOT. And that'll be, that'll be.
On 19.
On 19, DOT on 19. So then I brought up to them, I said, of all the roads that we have, that's actually not our worst road, with the exception of that stretch in front of Quick Trip. And I said, that should get looked at, got somebody out right away, Jefferson County's already on it.
Well, they can do milling overlay on it and just kind of hold it together for a few years.
Well, but they're, they're just gonna do that section of a repair, not do the whole thing.
No, right.
Because we don't want to keep kicking the can down the road because it's only just gonna keep, you know.
No, I meant, put a significant patch in that area.
That's what they're doing.
Yeah. So 89 is from the bridge to city limits?
Correct, which is a big chunk.
And then 19 is just Quick Trip to.
Portland.
Portland, right, okay.
Which doesn't need that much work right now, and that's not hurting any of our other street projects or any of that stuff.
I just didn't remember if 19 was from the bridge or 89 was from the bridge.
19. I'm sorry, 89, they're both the same road though.
No, I, that's why, I was.
Yeah.
And that's probably why they wanted to try and keep them a little closer together.
Sure.
Because they share the same stretch, but that road has just got awful, so that has to happen. So we'll get this red wrote up, I'll give confirmation from the DOT, I'll get this sent to the DPW next meeting, you guys can mull it over. And then we'll just have a, hopefully, a good working document that maybe won't change in the next couple of years.
Layer that in with the colors, spreadsheet that we have, so we can kind of update.
I can, I can update.
Doesn't he always an update?
That's what's happening in May, yeah.
Okay.
So that's why we had this meeting.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't know if they're gonna update what that new change, but I can go into the spreadsheet and change that, so you guys can have that part, there's might be the old bits of change, so many times I.
I'll just give us a.
Yeah, I'll, I'll change it for you guys and then.
Right, yeah, no, agreed.
That is coming.
Anything else?
All right, we'll move to adjourn.
Cool, so I can.
Have a motion, a wire taken by Cool to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And thank you, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you Tim for your many years on this committee.
Yes.
The hard work that you've done.
You're not gonna point leave us.
No.
You can, you can bench over here.
Maybe I have to call you in for a switch hitter every once in a while. You can go back, memory banks for.
I intend to.
Four person committee.
For a while?
For a while.
No, probably not, because that would be a whole lot of change and stuff, because right now it's set up as three.
Kind of what I thought. No, but it could be a mentor.
Oh, I was saying, that's exactly what I want.
Yeah. Mayor and I've already talked about that.
Nice to have the experience, the guidance.
And you normally don't get that luxury, people either just lean or, you know, that's the first reason why you kind of committees around a little bit, you know, people aren't gonna meet or whatever that you've got. You got the legacy info along with.
It's where. On a different topic.
Oh yeah.
I'll forward it on to you.
I think I can.
Oh, yeah. I just didn't want to be crisped.
Yeah, no, I don't. I can't think of anything.
I just saved it in a folder. No, I don't think. I think everything was sealed up.
Yeah.
Minutes from the last.
So, you know, were emailing me out of California. I read them. They told me I had to stay off my computer. Well, she made up for it when she came back.
Yes, I did.
And then I heard.
That's not from the drafts, is it?
She cannot find any machines.
It's true.
She's gonna mess with the tape, huh?
We're, we're, that's a good point. So God only knows what, how.
We should rest this weekend.
Well, that's, you should rest.
Really?
The phone won't be dinging all the time.
The fact that I have my headphones, my ear.
Oh, yeah.
What?
Yes. I also want to look for.
He literally is more boring than I am. Got tweezers in my ear and I'm like, don't shove it in front of her, don't shove it in.
At the airport.
At the airport.
Only airport.
And I, my question was, did anybody take pictures?
No.
Not that I want.
Unfortunately.
Oh, I really wanted a picture of that.
You should really just, you should start tonight right at like eight and then just have a little siesta Monday.
I might need one.
You can have all the ones you want.
Right. Yeah, you go ahead and sip one and you can drink, girl.
Oh, I do. You also didn't like a lot of sun until you went on vacation.
Yeah, I like all weather.
Ocean is good.
Same, I like all weather.
Swimming is good, though. Pools are good.
Swimming, ice creams, little umbrellas.
Very nice. Frozen drinks.
They're good.
Cheers to rum.
I have a little bit more to watch.
I saw it. Not sure where.
We can all see it later.
I asked each of the judges of mine, Michael, who has got to deal with that.
Ready? All right, we are. No, no, that's it. We will, we will.
Just kidding, just kidding. In life.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Richesland, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are. Roll call, please. Cummings here.
Austin Cool here.
Charles Cool here.
Griffin here.
Thomas here.
Wyatt here.
All here. Uh, this is the annual organizational meeting to start off with. Um, it's a discussion of the organizational opportunities, not really sure what that is. So we're just gonna move on. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve. This is appointing the newspaper, deputitors, and the auditors, which nothing has changed other than the paper is called the Leader and Defendant now.
Thomas Speaker Marshall approved resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve. Griffin, a second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Griffin to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carried. Uh, election of council president, this is what we do every year at this time. Basically, you make a nomination, a second. I ask three times if there's any new nominations. If there is not, the person nominated, if they accept it, then we vote on it and we move on. So at this point, I will take nominations for council president.
Cummings will make a nomination for Charlie Cool for president.
Nomination by Cummings for Charlie Cool, do I have a second?
I will second that.
Wyatt will second. Do I have any other nominations? That's number two. Number three, do I have any other nominations? Closing nominations. Charlie, will you accept the position of council president?
I will.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Staying.
Motion carried, congratulations. And thank you, Tim, for being council president for all these years.
Yes.
You did a wonderful job, Charlie's got big shoes to fill.
Certainly do.
All right, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one is the new appointments. Um, Richard obviously came back for another four years. So a couple of different changes. Um, really the only big changes were, uh, Parks Commission. We have Cool taking over for Wyatt, Austin Cool. Jamie Parker is new, Al Kegler, who has served on the commission for many, many years. Thank you very much, Al. His term was up, Jamie Parker, she's a Waterlooian who left and came back. So she is now on the board officially. Um, and the, uh, excuse me, the Water and Light Council representative is Richard than on your Finance, Public Works, the, the main three standing committees. Finance, Charlie is now the chair with Wyatt and Hasli being added. Tim has very generously accepted to kind of be a mentor. That is one thing that we've never really had here, the pleasure of people knowing they're not gonna be running again and being able to help other people and mentor them and help them through. So it is a good thing to move people around on the committee sometimes because we're not all here forever. So Jovi is on Finance now, Public Health and Safety, Cummings, it's the same group. Cummings will now be the chair. This will be her first time chairing a meeting. And Public Works does remain the same with Wyatt being the chair. So all of these just simply require approval or changes, whatever your preference is. And note, I do talk to people before I do this.
Thomas, make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one approving the council confirmation of the mayor appointments.
Cummings will second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Cummings to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carried. That now adjourns the annual meeting. Now we go into the regular meeting, meeting minutes approval of April third. Are there any additions or corrections? I would say none.
Cummings will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April third.
Austin Cool, second.
Motion by Cummings, second by Austin Cool to approve the meeting minutes of April third. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carried. Presentation, audits, uh, presentation reports by Baker Tilly. This is what we always do at this time of year as well. I do have it on the screen in case anybody wants to follow along at home. And Taylor.
Well, thanks for having us. Um, I'm Justin Hoakland, I'm a principal at, at Baker Tilly. Um, I also have Taylor with me tonight, she's a senior associate, um, with Baker Tilly. And so we work on the city side of your audit. We have a separate group that, um, you know, their expertise is utilities, so they do your utility side. Um, but we will speak on that a little bit tonight as well. Um, and so we did issue your, uh, twenty twenty-four statements back on April fourth. And so as, as the mayor said, at this time, we then like to come and kind of give a brief presentation going over some of the financial highlights, um, as well as looking at the different reports that we, that we issued. Reports that we, that we issued, so. Uh, with making the audit go smooth as, as it has in years past, so. Um, you know, this is, you know, one of the top five, I guess, audits that we issue, um, as far as um, how soon we issue it, April fourth is pretty, is pretty early. Uh, and that would be possible without, um, kind of everything being aligned and, and ready to go, so. Um, thank you again. Uh, so first, wanted to go over, um, the reports that we issued. So first one I wanted to go over is, looks like this. It's called the Reporting and Insights from the Twenty Twenty Four Audit. So this document has a lot of different information in it. You know, it has Taylor and I's contact information, if you're ever going to get ahold of us. It has any internal control deficiencies that we note during the audit, any recommendations that we have, as well as a bunch of other, um, kind of communication that we are required to give those charged with governance to the council. So I encourage all members to read that report. You know, next is, you know, the financial statements themselves. You know, the one item I always like to point out in here is our opinion. So that's on pages one through three. Um, and so we do issue unmodified or clean opinion on your financial statements. That's the highest level of assurance that we can offer. Um, and that has been the same as probably the last decades, right? So all, all good there.
Just wanna stop you just for literally one second. Did every council member give that email with all of these documents? So usually what we do in this meeting is give everybody the highlights, but this, that email that we have to share it with all the council members.
Yep.
Uh, that way you know these, because you're looking at your packets and like you don't have.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want to print them. I did.
More trees.
More trees. That's why I don't want to reprint them, if the drafts are good. All right, sorry, I just wanted to.
No, all good, yeah, stop me at any point, or Taylor, if you have questions. Okay. Um, so next, Taylor's gonna go over some of the, um, kind of financial highlights from, from the city side of, of things this year, which is on the screen.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll scroll along if you wanna chat as we go here.
For sure, I can tell you when you can go to the next one. Um, so overall, when assessing the financial health of any municipality, we always like to start with the general fund as this is the main operating fund of the city and where most of the day-to-day transactions or routine transactions kind of run through. More specifically, we like to analyze fund balance or equity levels, as seen on the screen here. Um, you can see, or this shows a good comparison of twenty twenty-four fund balance levels compared to twenty-three. And as you can see, it's split out into various different buckets or types of fund balance. The first one at the bottom being non-spendable fund balance. This represents funds at year end that are not in a spendable form. In the city's case, it's actually entirely made up of prepaid expenses for funds that have already been spent on twenty twenty-five services. The city doesn't have any restricted or committed, so moving to the assigned fund balance, this represents funds that have been assigned for various reasons by council. Items may include future capital projects or equipment purchases. Overall, a more detailed listing of this balance can be found on page forty-five of your financial statements. And then what's remaining is your unassigned fund balance. This is kind of, this balance is made up of funds that can really be spent or not spent at the city's discretion at really any point. And as you can see, this increased about three hundred thousand dollars since last year, which is overall great to see. Then moving to the summarized income statement here at the center. This kind of, this summarizes, um, the net income of the general fund this year, which is about three hundred and six thousand, as you can see, which then compares to your budgeted revenues and expenses. Overall, the city did about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand better than budget for revenues and a hundred and thirteen thousand better than budget for expense. Again, a more detailed, um, listing of what makes up this variance can be found on page forty-five of your financial statements. Or sixty to sixty-three, budget to actual.
Sixty to sixty-three.
My bad. But overall, the main driver of this variance for revenues was investment income. It was about a hundred and forty-three thousand over budget, which is attributable to good market conditions and overall good interest rates on your investments. And then the main drive.
It changed.
Yes.
Thanks, Taylor.
And then the main driver of the expenditures being better than budget was primarily due to a significant under-budget in police wages, as there was quite a bit of open positions throughout the year. I'll move on to page two, where this chart again is focusing on general funds, fund balance, more specifically on that unrestricted available fund balance. This ratio here focuses on dividing or takes unrestricted fund balance and divides by the total funds expenditures for the year. Essentially, it's saying if the city were to take on no additional revenues, how long could it keep, keep covering its expenses by just using that fund balance that's available? For twenty-four, this calculated out to eighty-six point six percent, ultimately saying the city could cover its bills for almost eleven months using just that available fund balance in the general fund. On this chart then, the city is represented by like that orange-red-ish line and that while those blue dots are average municipalities similar to your size in Wisconsin. And overall, you can see the city has consistently been above this average position. Another area we always like to look at when determining financial health is, um, debt of a municipality. Again, on this chart here, identified with the black line is the city's, um, statutory general obligation debt limit. Oh, one more.
I know, I'm trying to get it more on the screen.
Good.
Unless you wanna see more on the bottom.
I don't think that's.
That's good?
Yeah. So black line is the statutory debt limit of the city or five percent of the city's equalized value. Meanwhile, the orange line is your actual debt outstanding as of year end. Based off of this, I, this, at year end, the city had used up about twenty-one percent of its debt capacity, which has been decreasing over the last few years as the city hasn't really taken out any additional GO debt. Again, this is, well, this is slightly below the average for municipalities your size. Um, but it's ultimately a good thing as it does give you future capacity to take out debt if need be.
Which we need. We will see in the next, get there.
And then the final page of the city side. Again, kind of with some debt. This is just another ratio to calculate, um, debt service to non-capital expenditures. It's essentially saying what percentage of your normal or, or routine expenditures does the city have to commit to, to, um, debt obligations? Because whatever is going to pay for these said debt obligations cannot subsequently be used for something else. On, on the graph again, the city is the orange-ish red, while, um, the black is other municipalities. Uh, you can see that the city calculated out to about twelve point nine percent went to cover debt service out of all expenditures, which again has also been decreasing over the last five years as there is not a ton of GO outstanding debt. And with that, Justin can go over the utility side of things.
Yeah, so as Taylor said, I'll kind of talk about your, uh, the Waterloo, Water and Light Commission next, um, which is made up of the, the water, the sewer, and the utility, uh, funds. So, as you can see at the top of the screen here, we're showing your operating results. Uh, the green is your operating revenues, the black is your operating expenses. Um, and so overall, it was a positive result for the year. You can kind of see there's, there's a consistent margin between those two, which is what you wanna see. Um, once those, those lines start to get a lot closer together, that's when you start to get a little nervous, start to want to think about, do we need to go out for a rate study? Are we not charging sufficient rates to cover our expenses? But right now, it's looking good and it has the last, the last five years that we're showing here. I'm sorry, mirror, I'm gonna have you go to the next page too, and have you bounce back and forth a little bit. Uh, so this next page is, essentially rolls up into that, that graph you're just looking at, right? This is gonna break it down, um, between the electric, water, and sewer. So, starting at the top here, your electric utility results. Um, again, green, operating revenues, black is your operating expenses. Operating revenues did increase a little bit from last year and that's because there was a rate, uh, increase for the electric side. Below that, we have your water utility results. Again, operating revenues did increase from the prior year. Uh, that was due to an increase in the amount of customers that you're, uh, providing water for. And then your expenses, um, also increased however, due to increase in, you know, maintenance and administrative costs. If you scroll down a little bit, mayor will show the sewer utility results. So again, the operating revenues increased from, from last year due to an increase, uh, in usage. And you had a, a small increase in operating expenses, which again usually follows the revenue. If you're, you know, using more, you're probably gonna have a little bit more in, um, you know, transmission and distribution charges, so. But again, those all look, look really good and overall looks good. If you'll go back to the previous page, please. Kind of finish out that page. Wherever the heck it is on there. There we go. So under the operating results, we have your unrestricted reserves. So we always like to look at, you know, how many months of cash on hand do you have? Kind of a similar ratio to what Taylor was, was talking about previously in the, in the general fund, those unrestricted reserves. So, um, at the end of twenty twenty-four, you have that, about four months of cash on hand in this fund. We usually like to see at least two months, so you are above that, that kind of standard. It did increase a good amount from, from last year, last year was two point three nine. So again, you're moving in the right direction there. Below that, we have your debt coverage. So you do have some, uh, utility debt outstanding that has a debt coverage ratio requirement. That requirement, you can see kind of here, it's one point two five. Essentially, the people that hold your debt wanna make sure you're gonna have at least one point two five times your, the next debt service payment, um, in revenue. And, you know, if you don't hit that, there's certain consequences that can happen, right? They could call a debt possibly or something like that, so. Um, however, you know, the last five years here, you, you, you have met that debt coverage ratio, um, by, by a good amount. So if you just scroll down one more little bit here, this investment in capital. So, right, these are very capital-intensive funds. Your, your water, sewer, and electric, right? You have wastewater treatment plant, water mains, meters, yeah, very capital-intensive. So we always like to look at, you know, what percentage of that capital assets are still have, associated with debt, right? You still have debt to pay off, associated with them. And the equity piece is what's kind of owned free and clear. And so thirty-six percent of those. And so thirty-six percent of those assets, again, are equity, sixty-four percent, you still have debt um, associated with them. And I would say that's right about, you know, kind of industry expectation for kind of the age of your um, current wastewater treatment plant and everything, so. Um, again, no- nothing concerning there. So overall, healthy position both on the city side as well as, as your utilities. Any questions for us?
And then we'll get to the decision, remember, stay at the question. I will make sure that everybody gets on Monday the full report, so whatever page numbers you guys can reference on that.
Does this get presented to the utility commission as well, or?
It usually does. It's my understanding it has not yet this year. They, they didn't request a presentation yet this year. So I don't.
It should.
Yeah, I would say normally Jody the.
Do you do that sometimes?
No, Jody the utility partner would do that, um, but.
Usually we get copies of the utilities too.
Of the utility statements?
Yes.
I can certainly send that uh, to everyone. Yeah, I, I wanna say right now there is no date set for that, um, so.
Do you do that any particular time?
At least May.
Is it May?
At least so.
Okay. Yeah, usually it does even before us, they, they do it, but, yep. But I'll, I'll send that out.
Yeah, thank you.
We have all the books and already I believe they were gonna come in May.
Okay, that's fine.
If you want a copy, I can just give you the copy of the book.
Whatever means, I, it can be electronic, it's fine. I've got enough.
We can send it to you electronically too.
Doesn't matter. Thank you. I usually get it, so I have a new folder. All right, we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. Uh, council, publishing offices.
Uh, just letting you know that Chad will be the lead commissioner and posting.
Thank you.
The leads.
Thank you.
With different sites. Um, the board review. Open book is May seventh from one to three, uh, it's a phone call, it's not in person. It's because we're not doing a big rebal or anything, it's just on the phone. And then we will have board review, May twentieth at, at noon. It has to be open for two hours regardless of the amount of people, um, so we'll be here for at least two hours that day.
That's why I had that, that was in my packet. So, we have that Chad's thing, that's why I had that. I asked you why do I have that? It was in my packet. Um, we are paying, um, or what the heck, what's the name of it? The admin, Alan. Aren't they, aren't they going through?
Associated industries?
Yes, thank you, Alan, I think still was saying, yeah. But we, we signed a contract to make sure that we stay in line, like we did that, so like a three-year thing. So, this board review happens and then are they still looking at things like, like in August? No, but we're paying fifteen thousand dollars or something like that every, I thought we did on the contract.
Well, we spread it out when they did their rebound, but that doesn't mean they're gonna do it every year. We spread out the payment for those years.
But I thought they were rehabviewing things just to make sure we stay compliant.
Well, they will, just like they did before, but that doesn't, that doesn't guarantee it, depends on what the market does.
Well, right.
So, but they will, we do it typically in May unless it's a need for a rebound, so. I don't know what percentage we're at yet because he has not done the, he just gave me a sample today and they're sending out the letters. Um, I think it was today, and then I'll be able to look at the whole roll so we can see where the.
I just wasn't sure what conversations have been going on, I really haven't heard a lot since everything kind of blew up or like, a lot of municipalities did exactly what we did. Some prairie does it every two years regardless, they do a full rebound every two years. Or whatever, however, there's adjust, but they, they do it every two years. And I knew we, we were paying on that, so I just wasn't sure if we're just keeping an eye on that again.
I think we'll be in the nineties still, but I will let you know, I'll, I'll let everybody know as soon as I get to see the, the numbers.
It's saying compliance is ninety to a hundred, right?
To one ten.
Percentage?
Yeah.
Okay, that is all I need, thank you. Uh, citizen in Florida, see you in none. Council meeting since, uh, two, sorry, since the last council meeting, CBA?
Um, yeah, we had a pretty quick meeting. Um, the biggest thing that we approved was moving the meetings to every other month instead of monthly.
And then you'll look at that if you feel.
Correct.
Kind of like the planning commission, it's really based on need, not necessarily necessity. So, so it is quartered or every other month?
Every other month, yeah, unless something pops up.
Correct, and it's gonna coincide with the parks as well, and that should have been in your org been to, uh, well, I had it in there, it's up, but I put it in there Monday off work, but that's fine. Okay, sounds good, thank you. Uh, finance, Tim's last one?
It's Charlie's, no.
No.
No, you still have a meeting. Nice try, nice try.
I was getting it away.
I knew he was gonna.
Do that.
Okay, we, everything we did comes before the council.
See, we did that one.
That was easy.
All right, since agenda items are in your packet, are there any questions, additions, anything you wanna discuss? Laura's doing some pretty hefty meeting minutes these days, so I know they got a lot going on at the, at the table.
Austin, who will make a motion to approve concerned agenda items?
Cummings will second. Motion by Austin, who is second by Cummings to approve financial reports as stated. Roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Clear, yes.
Council, motion carried. All right, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, fire department is uh, wanting to apply for a DNR grant to update some old equipment. No PPE, we just removed that, so the resolution does state that in there, but that's all right. It is for a fifty percent match. Chief, do you have anything you wanna say about it?
Uh, the only thing that we'll add will be we will pay it all upfront, we will get reimbursed a fifty percent from the DNR after we, we get the product.
What are you looking for?
Uh, it'll be drip torches, some pump cans, uh, update to the hoses, high-touch hoses and some other loose equipment wrenches and so on and so forth for DNR activities.
Wild, pan, wild.
Wild, yeah.
Yeah, got it. Questions?
Cummings will make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two.
Austin Cool, second.
Motion by Cummings, second by Austin Cool to approve twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. This will be coming out of their own budget areas, nothing extra on that as stated. Roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Clear, yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, this is actually from the last meeting. Um, just had a little bit more discussion on Hendrix Street, kind of filling people in on what was going on, the, the changes that occurred over the five-year span of coming up with this project, so. We really are in line, it isn't as terrible as one thought. Um, but one of the questions we still had was regarding um, just some of the costs. So, DPW and the utilities, we met on Monday, they've already started taking down the trees, so we're gonna save roughly twenty thousand-ish doing that ourselves, we can do that. So within any bid project, you have ten percent that you can tweak with without having to rebid it, but if you go over or under that, you have to rebid the whole project. So, looking through everything and just confirming with what the utilities thought the cost would be, what we thought the cost would be, it actually came in good, some of the numbers that were in your packet was actually a document from the utilities when they sent this into the USDA. So don't be confused by the twenty twenty-two numbers, that was an estimate back then, which things have kind of changed on and off throughout the time, but anyway, confirming with the utilities and what we went through, Chad confirmed with those projects, we're, we're really in line. This has changed a few different times, we added a few different things. About the only thing we could do is a sidewalk elimination, which is up on your screen, which is in front of, of the DPW building, this little section going down Hendrix, uh, down to this intersection by Bishop Circle. And that would be roughly, that would be roughly, that would be roughly, which I must do, which I personally thought when we needed it. Where Hendrix Street starts here on East Madison Street goes all the way down, this is all the residential side here down the Bishop Circle. No matter what, the sidewalk has to cross to go on the west side and it will continue through the park or to the park bridge, all on city property, just due to the elevations and DNR and wetlands and all this stuff we have to avoid over here. Um, the road that's gonna go into uh, three thirty-three Portland Road is gonna be somewhere in this area. No sidewalks are gonna be here, so no matter what, if we do it on both sides or just this one side, people still have to cross the street from the east side to get over here, period. So, it's totally up to you, we can leave it alone as it is or take that short section out. And if anybody else wants to talk about it, you all go right ahead. Or you can approve it as it is, don't worry about it. What everyone, I just know there was some discussion at the last meeting, so I just wanted to make sure everything is out there. Questions are answered, this is a big project. People will be thrilled, they have sidewalks and a sidewalk.
Oh, yeah.
So, finance, this is on your agenda. Do as you wish.
Would we gain any road width if we eliminate the sidewalk on the west side?
No.
No.
No, the road width will be.
Still sixty-six.
Kerb better stage.
Kerb better stage, okay.
The road width, the way it is currently right now at the first block of Hendrix Street and East Madison Street, that width will carry all the way through to Fireman's Park, to the, oh, not to Fireman's Park, it's.
To the bridge.
To the bridge crossing.
I am for keeping sidewalk on both sides for safety, that is one of the main entrances into the park. When there are Fourth of July activities, baseball games, et cetera, you see many people walking on the street, going in and out of the park, many kids are walking. I'm not gonna disagree that they may use the street. But if we don't have sidewalk, it's not available to them. So I am for keeping it.
Yeah, is there gonna be parking on this side?
Do we have parking in now?
Currently, there's.
No parking?
That'll be something we have to address once the road is finished, couldn't we?
Say that one more time.
We'll have to adjust that part once the road is finished, whether we wanna park on both sides or.
Yeah, there's only parking in the first block, I don't think.
Will there be enough room?
Currently, we eliminate.
We don't need it on the other side, it should just be on the one side, trailer park.
So both sides, one on the park, there is no parking.
Okay.
From Bishop to the.
Correct.
Currently, right now, all the residents on Hendrix Street have adequate room in the traffic to park all their vehicles. Once in a while, somebody have a neighbor over, they'll park either side of the road right now, so. The side, the sidewalk won't have any ish, any issue with parking.
What would the setback be for the sidewalk and the curb with the sidewalk?
Where's that gonna have terrain, from the terrace?
Four-foot tree terrace and a four-foot sidewalk.
And possibly from the trailer park or, or at least from East Madison to Bishop, parking on one side? So.
The side, the sidewalk won't have any ish, any issue with parking.
What would the setback be for the sidewalk and the curb with the sidewalk?
Where's that gonna have terrain, from the terrace?
Four-foot tree terrace and a four-foot sidewalk.
And possibly from the trailer park or, or at least from East Madison to Bishop, parking on one side?
I would, I would assume the problem is maybe able to let them park on both sides of the street on Hendrix, Bishop, and then not to let. I mean, it's, one sidewalk, one in the park, we probably have no parking on the west side with sidewalk on there, just for the sake. People jutting on in the traffic with sidewalk there, I would assume we just do one side, no parking going north into the park.
We'll look at that, you might wanna just do it in the first block to Mel or to Cleveland and then.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, once the road is done, we'll address that.
Okay. Right, anything else anyone has want? Any other questions?
Thomas make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, accepting the bid from Donner Inc. for Hendrix street reconstruction and DPW parking lot.
Griffin, second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Griffin to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen. Any other questions? Roll call. Go ahead.
As planned.
As planned.
As planned, thank you.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Clear, yes.
Hasland, yes.
Motion carried. Future agenda items and announcements, anyone have any suggestions? Egg hunt is Saturday, it was not gonna tell you that, hunch your egg Saturday, we'll get it, we'll get it.
And, oh, it already passed, never mind, mind you say it. The library was putting on like an egg hunt that they could, um, you could purchase eggs to be placed in your yard. It was due yesterday.
Is that where the business location too?
I honestly believe so.
Good.
Yeah, so I definitely did it.
All right, good job.
Yeah.
All right.
Who makes motion to the general?
Austin Cool, second.
Cool's, Austin, Charlie. All favor?
All right.
Motion carried.